Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Victoria City Council meeting for December 2nd, 2025. Ms. West, would you please call roll?
Yes, Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker is not attending.
Okay, at this time, I invite you all to stand with me for the pledges and please remaining, remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and the one.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening, in person and watching, Mr. Garza, good evening.
It is me.
That is you.
I'm sorry. Well, good evening, how are you? I do have quite a few announcements for you this evening, so please bear with me.
Jumping into it.
On behalf of the City Secretary's Office, we want to remind you that we will be convening on Friday, December 12th, at 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers for our quarterly council work session. We will provide, Wesley will provide for the first time, spearhead the debt capacity overview that we go over every December, provide a CIP update. And Kevin Shepherd with Verdunity will be here to provide a five-year overview or comparison of some of the fiscal analysis that they do that looks at acreage, revenue, and all sorts of fun stuff. So looking forward to that conversation on Friday. In addition, we'd like to remind the public that residents with an interest in policy development and public safety can apply now to be among the first members of the new City of Victoria Civil Service Commission. This volunteer commission will oversee policies related to hiring, promotions, and disciplinary measures for the Victoria Fire Department. The commission will not play a role in collective bargaining. The commission will consist of three members appointed by the city manager and confirmed by council, who will serve staggered three-year terms. The initial appointments will be for one, two, and three-year terms. The commission will initially meet twice a month, then on an as-needed basis to be determined by the commission and city staff. To learn more and to apply, please visit victoriatx.gov/civilservice. On behalf of the library, we want to remind the public that we will be holding our 35th Annual Gingerbread House Workshop this Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Victoria Community Center Dome. Gingerbread house kits will be available to build at the event or take home while supplies last. I'm looking forward to taking Michael to that. On behalf of the Parks Department, we're inviting residents to downtown this Saturday, December 6th, for the lighting of the HEB Christmas tree at 5:30 p.m. in Delium Plaza, followed by the lighted Christmas parade at 6:00 p.m. Both the parade and the tree lighting ceremony, excuse me, the tree lighting ceremony will be livestreamed on City of Victoria, Texas Government Facebook page for those who are unable to attend. On Saturday, December 13th, the City of Victoria and Mother Cluckers Downtown will host Marion Main at Delium Plaza from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. featuring vendors, food trucks, activities, and entertainment. I'm about halfway through, by the way. On behalf of the Police Department, we want to remind the public that we are accepting applications for the Civilian Police Academy, class number 46, which begins Tuesday, February 24th. The Civilian Police Academy is an 11-week program that offers residents an inside look at how the Victoria Police Department functions. Participants will meet officers, learn about various divisions, and experience firsthand elements of police training. Classes are held Tuesday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. with one additional Saturday session. Space is limited, applications can be picked up at the Community Engagement Office located within the Victoria Mall, or downloaded from the webpage of victoriapd.com. For more details, please contact Officer John Turner at 361-485-3811. On behalf of the CBB, we want to remind our residents that they can earn rewards for shopping local as Discover Victoria, Texas again hosts the You'll Love Shopping Victoria mobile promotion this holiday season. Residents and visitors can go to discovervictoriatexas.com and click on You'll Love Shopping Victoria, located under the Explore tab, to sign up for the mobile passport. After signing up, participants can check in at participating businesses to be entered into a drawing for one of five gift bags filled with items from local retailers and restaurants. In addition to the drawing, residents who meet specific check-in milestones can earn t-shirts and other swag items. The last day to check in will be December 20th, and the drawing for the gift bags will take place on December 22nd. That's it.
That was quite a mouthful.
It was, yeah, I need to drink some water now.
Well, I look forward to a great Saturday downtown. At this time, we'll move down to item B2, Public and Employee Recognitions. We do have one, the Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award. Ms. West, will you help me? Or there's Ms. Byrd.
Yeah, we'll just turn it over to Meredith.
I did your part.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. So on behalf of Keep Victoria Beautiful, before we get to the award, I wanted to thank everybody again who came out a couple of weeks ago for the cleanup of the FW Gross neighborhood. In two short hours, our 108 volunteers serviced 89 homes in the neighborhood, removing 16 tons of bulky trash, five tons of brush and tree limbs, and the Victoria Fire Department was able to install 25 smoke detectors. And so, once again, thank you guys and to the community for, once again, showing up for your community. And next, I would like to introduce our board member, Kim McGill, to present the award.
Good evening, Kim.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. It is a pleasure to be here today as we recognize a business that truly embodies what community pride looks like. Victoria is a wonderful place to live, work, and grow, and it becomes even better when local businesses invest not only in their customers, but also in the beauty and character of our city. Today, we celebrate Dr. Frels, Dr. Frels and Dr. Jansons as Frels and Johnson Orthodontics, the well-deserved winners of the Keep Victoria Beautiful Award. You can see what a pretty picture that is. They've always been known for creating confident, beautiful smiles, but they've gone far beyond that. They made it a priority to extend the same care and attention to the space around them. From their clean, welcoming grounds to their thoughtful landscaping and inviting carpet peel, they've set a standard that inspires the entire community. Their effort sends a message that taking pride in where we are reflects pride in who we are. By maintaining a property that is tidy, attractive, and welcoming, they've contributed to make Victoria a place we can all be proud to call home. We thank them not only for their phenomenal profession, but for their commitment to keeping Victoria beautiful. Their dedication is an example of how local businesses can shape the look and feel of our community. One corner, one flower bed, and one smile at a time. Let's congratulate them on a well-earned recognition and thank you for making Victoria, Texas, an even better place to be.
You're more than welcome to say something.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Dr. Leslie Frels, along with Dr. Abby Janson. And we're so honored and excited to have received the Keep Victoria Beautiful Award. We're the only locally-owned and operated orthodontic practice in the area, and we take great pride in our community and in the upkeeping of our building and its landscaping.
So as some of y'all, probably a lot of Victorians here, know, the practice was started and built by Dr. Robert Westbrook. And his mission and ours is to beautify smiles. And I think that starts with having a beautiful space, welcoming space for our patients and their parents and families to feel welcome. But I think beyond the scope of our practice itself, Dr. Frels and I are both from the community, born and raised, and so we do take great pride in Victoria. And we want to ensure that Victoria is a welcoming and beautiful place for people to visit, a place that people are proud to call their home. And so I think that this is such a wonderful organization, and we're very, very much honored that we be recognized by it. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. It's a fantastic space. You guys do wonderful work for our community. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to. Do we have more?
Yes, I do have a few employee recognitions.
We'll jump ahead.
It's okay, just a couple of items here. Recently, we had another internal promotion that I want to acknowledge in this setting. So I'd like to ask Daryl Barnes to please rise. That sounds weird. That's always, please rise. But yeah, that's right. He was recently promoted to Solid Waste Superintendent for Environmental Services. In this role, he will oversee the planning and operations of the Solid Waste Division, which encompasses residential solid waste services for 21,000 households in Victoria, including garbage, recycling, yard waste, tree limb, and bulky item service. Daryl was hired 13 years ago as a driver for environmental services, moved to lead driver in 2015, and then promoted to supervisor in 2017. So it's always awesome, of course, to have employees, you know, start from the bottom, and now they're here. So congratulations, Daryl. Pretty cool recognition that I want to speak to. Our National Night Out event is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Did I say that right? Camaraderie. Got it.
Close enough.
Yeah. For the past four years, the Victoria Police Department has entered the National Night Out Awards Program, and each year, it has moved up in ranking. This year, Victoria was ranked seventh in the U.S. and second in Texas among cities with populations of 50,000 to 100,000. Last year, we were ranked eighth and third respectively. Our Community Engagement Unit works hard to build relationships with our community, and as you can see from this award, they are setting the standard in the state and the nation. So congratulations, John Turner, who's super very involved with that, and of course, our police leadership as well for their recognition. And lastly, I want to acknowledge a few, is this on? Okay. And lastly, I want to acknowledge a few employees who recently celebrated a significant milestone for us. We recently honored some of our long-tenured employees at a breakfast that Jan Scott had a chance to attend, as she herself was an awardee, celebrating 10 years of service. And so congratulations, Councilwoman Scott. But we also had a chance to recognize dozens of employees representing five years of service, 10 years of service, so on, so forth. And it's always really neat when we start to get to the longer-tenured employees, because the list starts getting shorter and shorter. And so I thought it would be appropriate to recognize our employees that recently celebrated 30 years or more. And so I'd like to ask them to briefly stand and be recognized for their service and their loyalty to our organization and community. And I'll start with 30 years, and it'll build up to 45 years. But I would be remiss if I didn't start with our godfather, Gilbert P. Reyna Jr., CPA, who of course recently became Assistant City Manager, but has been with our organization for 30 years of service. And of course, our financial transparency and just our overall financial position would not be possible without Gilbert's decades of service to our community. And so Gilbert, thank you for your service. In addition, we are also celebrating another 30 years of service in Kevin Sanderson, who currently serves as a police captain for our police department. You know, Kevin, I should say captain, I apologize, captain. But Captain Sanderson is truly reflective of what I think we all aim for, specifically in our police department, which is just that consistency, right? That consistency, that reliability. And remind me how many years you've been a captain for? So 17 years as captain is certainly telling of his commitment and his consistency of leadership within our police department. And so Captain Sanderson, thank you for your 30 years of service. And we'll move on to 35 years of service. I've mentioned his name on a couple occasions tonight already. He looks 35 years old, but he has recently celebrated 35 years of service. John Turner, who of course, we all know as the face, to some extent, behind Bragger, of course, of our police department, because of his involvement with our Community Engagement Unit as a senior police officer on paper. But in reality, he is our Community Engagement Officer, involved in a variety of different events. We, of course, just talked about our National Night Out event, which he spearheads, but is involved in a lot of other outreach efforts, even the videos that are award-winning, right, around Halloween. And so all the work of community policing, that term is sometimes overused, but in reality, it's truly crucial to have a police department that has a presence out in the community. And it wouldn't be possible to do that without John Turner. And so, John, congratulations for your 35 years of service. And last but not least, we celebrated 45 years of service, and I'll repeat that, 45 years of service to Jesse Gonzalez, who's one of our engineering techs with our Engineering Services Department. We had the luxury of having our retired Public Service Director and former city engineer Ken Gill honor Jesse with this award at the breakfast, which was, I think, very appropriate, because they spent literally decades working together. And I think Ken put it really well in his remarks about Jesse in that, you know, we take for granted the street work, the utility work, the location of signs, you know, just a lot of the things that are just part of the day-to-day mundane work that public works and that Engineering Services does. And Jesse has been part of that for 45 years. And so if there is anybody in our organization that has literally put their thumbprint on critical projects for our community, infrastructure projects specifically, it certainly has been Jesse. And if we want to talk about consistency and reliability, Jesse's certainly reflective of that as well, having recently celebrated 45 years of service. And so Jesse, congratulations. And I will say that I want to just say thank you to all of our employees that celebrated a milestone, but also just our employees that are part of our organization now. I mention to them, as I mentioned at every new employee orientation, that we're very grateful that they've chosen us to be their work family. And it's a responsibility that I and that we take very seriously. And that is, I hope, reflective in our efforts in doing the best we can to provide, you know, the best compensation and benefits that we can, us doing the best we can to provide them the tools and the resources that they need to be successful, the facilities that they need to be successful. That is a responsibility that is upon all of us to ensure that our people have what they need to be successful. And I think if we continue to focus on that and continue to do that, I feel optimistic that we'll be celebrating many more individuals reaching these milestones in the near future. And so thank you again, everybody, for your dedication to our community. And thank you, Councilman, for the support as we truly continue to make our organization an employer of choice, as they say. So, thank you.
Well put, well put. All right, at this time, we will move on to items from council. Are there, anybody have any items? Anything to speak of? Okay, we'll close items from council, and we'll move into citizens' communication. At this time, I've got a few cards here. I will call your name. And if you'll please come up to the podium and keep your comments limited to three minutes, it would be much appreciated. We will start with Mackenzie Ibaka. I hope that was it, A and not a U.
It is.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Ibaka, and this is the second time that I've addressed the council for the Victoria Parents Library Book Coalition. I started this because I was taking my daughter to the library, and she was picking out, she's three, by the way. She was picking out books, and I'd flip through their books, and there'd be crazy radical gender ideology and critical race theory in these books. And I started the book coalition and found that in 2021, I believe, a group of concerned parents concerned about the same thing started a petition for the same reasons, got over 1,000 signatures, and basically, nothing was done. The council voted to keep the books, the library voted to keep the books. We did talk with the library, and they did remove a significant portion, but according to them, was not for what we have done, it was because these books weren't checked out. So that is why I'm trying to appeal to the council and see, basically, what will it take? You know, what will it take for the council to speak about this, to hear what we're saying? Because if a petition with 1,000 signatures did nothing, how much longer do we have to ask y'all to please, we are just asking to change the policy for the juvenile section of the library to where it does not include books of critical race theory and of radical gender ideology? It's, the laws in this country, as I'm sure y'all know, in Texas are changing. These books are being taken out of schools. There's laws being passed to where you have to use the bathroom of the sex that you were signed at birth. And I think Victoria needs to go with this tide, go with this change. As crazy as it is that we have to have laws that say, you know, to protect our children this way, we need to, because time is crazy. The times are crazy. So again, I'm asking for the city council to please, you know, respond, talk about it, talk about what we are allowing in the children's section of the library, and to listen to the people of Victoria, because I'm sure y'all know, this is not a liberal city. It's much more on the conservative side. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ibaka. I will ask for Stephen Ibaka. Good evening, Mr. Ibaka.
Good afternoon, Councilman and Mayor. I am here first and foremost to support my wife, support my children, and speak on behalf of some of the children who don't have a voice. We are frequent flyers with the library. We have come across those books. I couldn't believe it when my wife showed them to me, but I saw them. And I came across some in Spanish-speaking books when I was trying to teach my daughters some Spanish. We saw a few pictures in there. I was like, wow, you know, they're jumping cultures with everything now. But anyway, there's an agenda being pushed, we all know that. The agenda is either good or evil, positive or negative. The door for innocence with our children is narrowing more and more as the years go on, as generations go on. With the phones, with computers, with movies, with TV cartoons, whatnot. And now they're hitting it with the books. So as we once were children, some of us have children, all I can share is my life experiences. They weren't there when I was a child in the library. I think I came out fairly well. Now they're here, and it's like, all right, we present this to y'all. Something small changes, you know, y'all move them to a different section. No good deed goes unpunished. We would like them to be, not just moved to different sections, but to be taken away from the shelves and to be flooded the shelves with more knowledge, with more adventures, stuff that the children could enjoy. They don't need to worry about what adults are going through and what things are going in life. Like I said, the innocent window is, door is narrowing more and more. And I know y'all know that by y'all's generation. So just consider the children with this, you know, there's an agenda being pushed, there's also money to be made. So what is really the point of these books on our shelves? Ask that, you know, ask yourself, what's the necessary point of this? As kids, we all get along, we have bullies, we interact differently. We don't need these books to mold our minds, direct us into the wrong paths. Let's just leave the kids alone. And we just hope that as born and raised Victoria citizen, you know, we just hope that some changes are made. They'll have access later on in life. And the library is a, people say it's a place where everybody can enjoy and get along with and be that as it may. We still have to have policies, morals. We can't just have, you know, all-goes in a public library. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ibaka. Mr. Von der Rohe.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Michael Von der Rohe. I live at 2107 North Bend, Jordan. I was just wondering, how much money is the county going to pay for the water leak at the public library? And like, what percentage? You know, if they can't afford to pay, you know, they could just get a bigger bucket, you know? Or a 55-gallon drum to get all the water, you know, it's kind of hard to read when you hear drip, 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 drip. You know, and it's in very bad condition, and I ain't heard anything. Hopefully, they're not stonewalling, and they really do want to take care of it. And also, we have too many dog bites in Victoria. We average 27 dog bites per month. That's about an average of one per day. And one of the reasons why we have so many dog bites is animal care services aren't picking up dogs and cats, because it's a no-kill shelter, so there's no room for it. And before, you know, dogs and cats would get euthanized, and we would make room for them. But since it's a no-kill shelter, they're not killing any, you know? And there's also dangerous dogs. I would like to see them take care of it specifically, the ones that attacked the postal carrier and the police officers on Brandywine, where the police officer had to shoot one dead and wound another dog. That's their job to issue the tickets, not the police officer's job. And also, on 217 North Jecker, one of their dogs just recently attacked someone and bit them. And they're not taking care of the problem. And I would like animal control or animal services to enforce them. You know, their fence ain't big enough, and their dogs are jumping the fence. And you might say, well, where would you find the dog owner? Well, he does volunteer work at Christ Kitchen. His name is Joe, and they've had 29 dogs they got. And I bet you none of them have their rabies shot, because the last speech Mark was talking about rabies shots. But are those 29 dogs that was there on their property, did any of them get their rabies shots? And also, I would like animal care services not to give any tickets if someone's feeding the municipal court cat and stuff, because it's been spated and fixed, because one person got four tickets for feeding four dogs that got underneath their house, because they called animal care services for help. But I would like the county to take care of the roof, you know, because so far, it don't seem like they've been doing nothing. And they need to step up to the plate and take care of it. Thanks, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Rohe. Mr. John Swanson. Good evening, Mr. Swanson.
Good afternoon. I'm here again. And I wanted to thank you again for doing all of the hard, difficult things you've got to do. But I'm here tonight. I was meant to come two weeks ago, because I want to say a prayer. But I'm here tonight, I was meant to come two weeks ago because I want to say a prayer for Gary Moses. Okay? Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Amen.
God bless Gary Moses. He's been an institution for us. So, I wanted to also get into, these young people here, I'll tell you what the consequences of, and I'm living it. When I go to the library, I can't trust those books. When I've got little kids with me, that's where we are. Okay? So, I don't trust them. I have to go and look and, and read and make sure that that stuff is suitable. That's unfortunate. I don't think we meant to be there. That's not where we want to be. But if we can't police it, if we can't police the dogs, then we have challenges. And I wanted to point out that y'all have a really tough challenge. You know, our goal is to raise the salary, the pay of our citizenry. We make $35,000 average, we should be making $70,000, $80,000 or like our teachers, $50,000 or like our police, $60,000 or like the firemen. But the problem is when y'all raise the city people's salaries, it sounds like it's helping all of the people, but it's not because we have to pay the taxes for those salaries. So, that's the conundrum that you're facing as you raise city pay. It detracts from the pay of the citizenry and we're trying to raise the citizen pay so that we can get more of everything. It's beneficial, it's, it's a difficult challenge to see. But raising citizen pay is not the same thing as raising city pay or county pay or state pay. It's, it's, it's a challenge. But y'all are pretty smart people and I think you'll figure it out. And I yield back the balance of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you as always, Mr. Swanson.
And you are appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Moses. Good evening, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, Honorable Members of the City Council, appreciate it. I wrote to the mayor in response to his letter. All right, my concern stated that it contained, I'll say in my words, blatant untruths, not from him, but by people he talked to, and his letter was unacceptable. With respect, deep respect for the mayor. The former chief of police Chuck Young's resignation followed by his immediate employment with the Sheriff's Department entirely, in my opinion, destroyed the credibility of the Victoria Police Department. It is a good old boy system at work again in Victoria, Texas. I am tired of being lied to for four solid years and it's an insult to my intelligence and the intelligence of the entire Victoria City Council. I will continue to address the City Council and do everything in my power to ensure that Sergeant Swanson is either terminated immediately or resigns immediately. Enclosed that you have is a blank Victoria Police Department complaint form with all of my written complaint documentation attached and notarized. Also attached are three typed pages detailing the litigation that would have been filed against the Victoria Police Department for their blatant police misconduct and violation of my wife's elder and civil rights. The Victoria Police video of August 26, 2021 proves everything that I said is true. Each member of the City Council and the Police Department have a flash drive of this or they should have a flash drive of this. The bailiff I talked to tonight, I always want to remember to make sure to deliver these papers to each City Council member tonight and deliver it to the acting chief of police tomorrow or today. I highly recommend that the acting chief of police review the police video of August 26, 2021 on the supplied flash drive. That video proves everything. If I do not receive an answer to my formal complaint of the council meeting, of this council meeting in two weeks, I will immediately inform the City Council on Tuesday, December 16, 2023, if that's the next meeting. I intend also to put that video on four different social medias. So, it can go out throughout the United States. I'm very serious about this. I've also talked to three very good blatant misconduct, blatant misconduct attorneys in Houston and San Antonio. They reaffirm this is blatant police misconduct. But my dad always raised me, don't litigate, son. I respected my dad, so I didn't. So, it's up to you. But in two weeks, I'm going to do everything else I said and I'm going to get justice for my wife. The last thing she ever told me was, I miss you, Steve. Those are the last words I ever heard of her. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moses. And lastly, we have Mr. Steve Westall. Mr. Westall.
My name's Steve Westall. I lived, I've lived at Australia, Australia Apartments here for three years. I was wondering if someone from the city can go with me to my apartment manager and straighten out a, a random add-on covered parking fee charge that's not in my contract and the Texas property code says it's illegal. I just wondered if somebody can help me from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westall. That concludes our items, C items with the, I'm sorry, Citizens Communication. At this time, there are no items of public hearings and so we will move into the consent agenda. Ms. West.
Consent agenda D1, adoption of minutes for the regular meeting held on November 18, 2025. D2, ordinance amending the 2025-2026 budget for the City of Victoria in carrying forward encumbrances outstanding at September 30, 2025, second and third reading. D3, a resolution approving in agreement with Christian Calvin DBA St. Christian's EMS for the use of City of Victoria's Public Safety Radio System. D4, a resolution reappointing members to the tourism board.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, consider agenda as read.
Second. The motion in a second, all those approves, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda as passed, we will move on to E, action items.
E1, approve the selection of an agreement with Lager Companies Incorporated for construction manager at risk services for the renovation expansion of the community center.
I assume we have a presentation?
You've assumed correctly.
Okay.
Yes. Did you assume it would take a minute?
No. I don't know what to assume. You know, I come up here for these meetings and I don't know if it's afternoon or evening. I always say evening because it's after five o'clock, but people respond with afternoon. So, it's one of those gray areas.
Did somebody steal the clicker?
Just killing time, folks. Doing a good job of it.
Yeah. Sorry about that. All right, we'll carry on. I might just have to ask you to move the slides. But in any case, so as we figure this out, very exciting day as we've reached a milestone in the renovation and expansion of our community center project. You may, let's see, did it go? Nothing.
There you go.
They're moving it for me. Following a very similar format to some of the presentations that Derek would use in relation to the Public Safety Headquarters Building. And you may recall him speaking to you about, you know, the, the three-pronged approach, if you will, to the project team. And of course, we have already formally gotten Populous, an architect, on board as part of the team. We, of course, also have AGCM as our owners rep as part of the team. And then tonight, we're recommending Lager Companies to be our construction manager at risk or the general contractor for the project. Next slide, please. I wanted to actually take a minute to expand a little bit on the procurement process because we did a couple of things a little different this go-around that I think are worth highlighting and quite frankly, even being proud of. We had a couple of goals going into this procurement process. We wanted to find a better way to, as part of the evaluation process, take into account all of the traditional elements that are part of a request for qualifications, which of course include things like experience, background, project team, things of that sort. But also trying to find a mechanism to also take into account a cost element to it. Because as we've seen from other, you know, experiences, you know, oftentimes when you focus so much on qualifications, you know, you end up basically, the cost could, can be very high if you just focus on that, right? So, we were trying to be very intentional with finding a creative way to account for all of that simultaneously, to some extent. And I'll explain how we did that through this two-step process here shortly. In addition, we wanted to also be more intentional with, as part of the evaluation criteria, basically awarding points for local experience. And so, I literally stole some of the verbiage that we included in the, in the evaluation form to give you a sense of how we did that. And so, we, for example, awarded points for successful, for successfully completing projects in the region. We awarded points for commitment to using local contractors. We award, we awarded points for familiarity with regional conditions. This was the first time that we were that intentional with including verbiage like that in a scoring mechanism. And again, that was very intentional on our part because we wanted to try and level the playing field, if you will, between local companies as well as those national companies that oftentimes, you know, bid on some of these projects. So, a little bit about the two-step process. So, we issued a request for qualifications. We received several of those responses and then narrowed it down to three firms of which received the RFP or the Request for Proposals. Next slide, please. With those three firms, we interviewed them in person. It was a pretty substantial evaluation committee that included myself, Darryl Lisak, Lisa Wube, Kate Garcia, Roger Welder, Elizabeth Wood and Keisha Smith. And all of us together had an opportunity to review the submittals both through the RFQ process as well as through the RFP process and also be part of the in-person interviews. And of course, ultimately, the combination of the changes that we made in the RFQ process as well as the two-step approach, our intentional effort to try and level the playing field for local contractors, obviously worked out because we are recommending Lager to be the general contractor on this project. Next slide, please. And so, a little bit about the company. I actually learned quite a bit about the company, you know, not being from Victoria, not being here since 1944. You know, I learned a lot about the history of the company and how it was basically rebranded on several different occasions since 1944. But since 1991 has been branded as Lager Companies Inc. as a general contractor. But that in essence reflects 81 years of, of business spanning three different generations. And on the right-hand side are some of the names that are associated with the team, some of which we're probably all familiar with as they've been with the company for decades. Of course, Craig Lager, Corbin Lager. But they also have some new individuals that recently joined the team. Of course, Kevin Kruger with substantial experience from his own company. Of course, joined the Lager team several years ago. But they've also had some recent hires and folks like Reed Schiff, Schiff Bauer, if I'm saying his name right, who had experience with a firm in San Antonio and is spearheading the modernization of the company and the estimating side and on the quality control side. Clay's been with, 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 with the company and with Kevin for a long time as well. And so has David. And so, the team that was presented by Lager really brings decades of experience to the table. And to expand a little bit on the company, I want to actually ask Corbin Lager to come up for a second and, and say a few words. Hello, Mr. Lager.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for placating me.
Yeah, I don't like to live in the gray, I like the black and white.
There you go.
Great, evening. Thank you, that was a good summary. Jesus.
You gotta add to it though.
I'm, I'm working on it, I'll get there. It, it's been 80, 80 years, over 80 years, so there is a lot. There's, we've been through a lot. I'm humbled, very humbled and appreciative to be standing here today. And I, I appreciate y'all's consideration of us in awarding us this project. Many years of, of me being a young kid, going to job sites with my dad. I didn't know my grandfather, the first generation, he passed away before I was born, but I, I learned a lot from him through job sites because his knowledge was passed on to other tradesmen on job sites I'd be on. And so, seeing projects come, come through town and, and hoping for a chance one day to, to, to be that, that contractor and, and just buying time and, and working and becoming, doing the things that we need to do in order to, to reach that level. And, and so I, you know, I'm very humbled to be here to, to, to be the, the contractor considered for this project. We take immense pride in, in all of our projects, but especially community projects, being that I am third generation and born and raised here. Very proud to, to be, to call Victoria home. And so, just like the Dailyon project, looking forward to instilling that same amount of pride in this project.
Thank you for your words, Mr. Lager.
Thank you, shit.
Any questions for him? Put him on the spot. No? Okay. All right, next slide, please. Just a little bit about the contract structure, just as a refresher. I, I don't believe all of you were, were on council when we went through this process with Spoglass for the Public Safety Headquarters Building. But the construction manager at risk model really comes at you in two different phases. It's coming to you tonight, which is basically an action item that authorizes me to basically enter into a contract with Lager. But in several months, the contract will come back to you and include some of the items that are basically to be determined. And so, one of the beauties of the construction manager at risk model is that it engages the general contractor, in theory, early or in the middle of a process so that they can have input in estimating, in estimating the project. They can have input in any value engineering opportunities. And, and they really work hand in hand with the architect before the design is completed. The other method of construction, which is just more, just, just your more traditional, you know, RFP basically model finishes the design first. And I'm sorry, I should have probably added a slide or two kind of further elaborating on the differences. But a traditional construction award contract would finalize a design without any input from any general contractor and then you would bid out that design and then award it to a general contractor. The construction manager at risks model engages the general contractor in the middle of the process so that they can have input. And that really ensures that the final product is obviously one that is doable, that you get the best pricing as possible. And all in all, puts a lot of the risk on the construction manager, hence the title of the method. But in any case, and so again, it comes at you in two, two manners. Tonight with the initial, with the initial, initial contract. And then it'll come before in a few months with the guaranteed maximum price. And I have a timeline slide where I'll kind of elaborate a little bit more on that. These are just some of the percentages that are included in the contract, just for your own benefit. And so, there is a fee of 3.5%, general conditions of 3.6% and then a pre-construction of $20,000. So, the way these contractors are, contracts are designed is that the pre-constructions intended to be a lump sum that is just representative of time and effort and energy spent by their personnel to help with the estimation, with the value engineering options and things of that sort. Once you start getting into the fees and the general conditions, that's when it starts to be a percentage based off of the total cost of the project. But because the design hasn't been finalized, there is no total cost of the project yet. And so, the GMP or the Guaranteed Maximum Price will be finalized as the design reaches final completion and then everything kind of comes together. Do you want to add anything to that? Either of you, you got that right? Excellent. All right, any questions on that part of it? Clear as mud? Excellent. Next slide, please. You went too far. Okay, so just a little bit of the timeline. It's hard to see, so I apologize, but of course, in June, we hired officially Populous and they began the design. In August, we hired AGCM, who is our owners rep. And in that same month, Populous actually completed the schematic design of the project. Excuse me. And as part of the schematic design came cost estimates. And so, to be fully transparent with you, because I think this is important as we proceed from today, the price estimates are coming in higher than anticipated. And so, there has been quite a bit of work over the last few months in working with both Populous as well as with AGCM on some options that could potentially bring the project more within budget or phase out the project or eliminate concepts from the project, all of that. All of that is still on the table. But before we are in a position to present those options to you, it's important to have Lager on board so that they can provide their input on the cost. They can provide their input on some value engineering. And so one of the values that I think we're going to get in, on this project specifically is that Lager's local experience and specifically their experience in working with metal buildings and things of that sort, I think is going to help us maximize our budget, basically. And so what happens from here on out, we'll have, we'll engage Lager, get them officially on board. They'll work with us, with AGCM, with Populus on some of those potential changes to the design. We will present those to you as they become finalized. And so ultimately, the project is beginning to be delayed, basically. We had committed that construction would start in March of 2026, shortly after the livestock show. At this point, that, that will not happen. At this point, we are prioritizing exploring the options that could get us within budget of the project. And so we anticipate sharing those options with you in January, which ultimately will lead to the design development being complete in early 2026. And you can't finalize the guaranteed maximum price on the construction side until that takes place. And so we also anticipate that occurring in early 2026. And we can't give you a sense of when construction is going to start until both of those things happen. And so that's why it's critical that we get Lager on board as soon as possible. We probably are about a month, a month and a half delayed from when we originally would have had liked to get a general contractor on board. But we've taken the approach all along as we want to get it right. And we'd rather get it right than get it rushed. We'd rather get it right than be rash with certain decisions. And so I think we're definitely taking that approach, and that's the approach that we're going to take also with when we begin construction. And so more to come over the next several months on any potential recommendations on changes to the scope of the project. But for now, we're excited to get that third player into the mix to help us finalize those recommendations that we plan to make to you in January. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. You can go to the last slide if you want.
Anybody have any questions or comments? No.
Okay.
Thank you, but I do appreciate your, your best value approach. I think it's great for, for the community as a whole. Do I have a motion for E1?
I move we adopt E1.
I second it.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of item E1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item E1 passes. Mr. Lager, I, I do want, I'm excited to continue to work with you and excited for your company to put its stamp on our community once again.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Moving to item E2.
E2, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing posting and publication of notice and intention to issue certificates of obligation in the maximum aggregate principal amount of 12 million for the certain capital improvements, including streets and sidewalks and related improvements, public safety, and municipal court facilities, and parks and recreation facilities.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, like you said, we're going to be considering the notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. I've got a short presentation, but first I do want to clarify some items for the public. The project that these bonds will be issued for is the Bon Air Street Reconstruction Phase 1 and 2. This project and funding strategy were approved as a part of the city's CIP plan earlier this year. Project costs and issuance of the debt was included within the 26 budget, and then the fiscal 26 tax rate included within its INS rate, a portion dedicated to servicing the debt on this tax issuance, so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Also, I have Dusty Trailer here from, he's our financial advisor with RBC Capital Markets. He'll be available for, for any questions you may have on, on the process. But just real brief, we had originally had Bon Air Phase 1 in the 25 budget to issue bonds for. That project was delayed due to the design, so we decided to combine the two phases this year and do them all as one issuance, so there will be some, some cost savings by combining those two phases. We do have a, a ratings meeting planned for January of 2026 where they'll issue a rating to the city, which will impact the interest rate that we can get on these bonds. We'll issue or do the sale in February of 2026. At that time, we'll come back and provide, present another item to council to approve the sale, and then we'll close on the funds in March of 2026. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have for me or any questions for Dusty.
Any questions for Mr. Yannick or, or Dusty? Mr. Trailer?
I have a question. There's a note in there.
Is there a mic on?
I don't know. Is it on now?
Yes.
There's a note in there regarding enough debt capacity. So how much debt capacity will remain after the issuing of these COs? And will it limit our ability to respond to future emergencies or capital needs?
No, like I said, this, this has been a part of, of our plan, and this was presented as a, in the debt capacity presentation in the prior year. So we had planned doing the 12 million this year along with the next few years of our CIP. So this all kind of falls in line with, with what's been planned, and they'll have more information to present next week at the, at the work session.
And I think one thing to keep in mind, too, when it comes to the issuance of debt is that the only real limiting factor that exists on how much debt we can issue is ourselves. And so when we talk about debt capacity, we typically approach it from, which you'll hear more about next week at the workshop. If we continue to keep the INS rate and the revenue is the same as we finish paying some debt off, it frees up some debt. But there's flexibility if council had the, the policy direction to address needs or emergencies as they come up.
I'd like to add something.
Of course, only because you've been here 30 years.
Thank you very much. Ms. Butler, there's plenty of capacity after that, and I would get into that next week. But I just want to remind council, this is not like it happened overnight. This has been planned for years and years and years. Why is that, Gilbert? We're up here, every time we have this CIP meeting, we talking about redeeming bonds, debt management. We keep our debt low. Tax rate been dropping, you know, seven, eight cents over the past four or five years. We still have our debt capacity, and this is part of the plan. It didn't happen overnight. So it was planned out maybe three, four years ago because all the time we did these presentations during the CIP in December, we always encouraged redemption of bonds. And as you remember, we are approved $600,000 in redemption this coming year. That's part of the philosophy. So in, in summary, there's plenty of capacity after this. It doesn't harm us at all. With that, we can go up to $2 of tax rate if we needed to, but we don't go and do that. But overall, city's finances are very secure. I have Dusty here. I paid him very well. He can testify to that.
Does he want to say anything?
No. Microphone. Microphone. Gilbert told me if I came, he'd make me come to the podium. Again, Dusty Trailer with RBC Capital Markets. We have the honor and privilege of representing the City of Victoria's financial advisor. I really don't have anything further to add other than, and, and the reason for that is because of the steps that you all have already taken and the financial position that the great work of this city has placed y'all in. You guys have, have done a great job planning for years and years. And so this issuance is, is just simply part of that plan and should not limit you moving forward to address future capital needs. As it relates to the bond market, right now, the bond market seems very strong. Interest rates have been trending in the right direction here, here recently, and we're fingers crossed that they're still in the right direction as we get to price these certificates of obligation in February. So we're expecting great access to the market. Yes.
Can I, can I? It's not really a question.
No, absolutely. The, the microphone is yours.
In the spirit of transparency, because there will be individuals who are following this, who will want to understand how COs work, and I recognize that Gilbert has on multiple occasions explained certificate of obligations. But Wesley or, or Dusty, would you, for those individuals that aren't clear on the difference between a CO bond and a bond that say VISD proposes?
Yeah.
What that looks like so that, so that there's a real differential there that's explained to the public?
You got it, Finance Director. No, come on, don't, no, 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 no.
So.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Dusty can elaborate if I, if I don't provide enough detail, but essentially with the certificates of obligation, there's no requirement to vote on those. Those are strictly approved via council through the tax rate and through this process. And there are some restrictions, or there may be certain restrictions if legislation passes on, on what we're able to do with those. But essentially, it's more of a political decision to issue a certificate versus going through the election process of a GO bond. The risk, of course, with going through election is having citizens vote no and then not being able to proceed with the project. But in a nutshell, that's, that's the difference.
I want to add one more thing to this point on the CEO.
Excuse me.
There's a require, they can petition. They can get a petition on CEO to kind of bring this to a stop, too. You have to have X number of, 15% of the vote or something like that. So there is some compliance requirement that if somebody, you know, the population doesn't want a CEO, they still can submit the thing to council, and that can kind of slow it down and stop it too as well. So it's not like a freebie thing, too. Publics too has input.
I think that's good. I just think that there's a lot of questions in the community about it, and so I thought clarification would be good.
No, transparency is always good.
Judge, that's, that's the purpose for this process this evening, actually, is this, the action item before you this evening is the notice of intention to proclaim publicly the city's intention to issue this debt and to start that 45-day period. You cannot issue this debt under state law sooner than 45 days after this notice is publicly posted. And that's to give the, the citizens the opportunity to understand the dollar amount, the intended projects, et cetera, for, for the debt.
Thank you.
All the normal process.
Right.
For the city. Okay. Any further discussion? I'll ask, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve item E2.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item E2 passes. Thanks, gentlemen. Item E3.
E3, approve a renewal contract with current stop-loss carrier Sun Life Financial in the amount of $921,997.
Good evening, Ms. Campos.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. So the reason for my visit today is to discuss the renewal contract with our current stop-loss provider, Sun Life Financial. If you'll refer to the agenda item regarding that renewal, staff is recommending and requesting approval to renew the stop-loss liability insurance contract in the amount of $921,997. This renewal rate comes in significantly lower than the original increase projection of 39%, yielding a savings of $149,195. This recommendation does not affect the 2026 healthcare premiums for employees and is budgeted out of the city's health fund. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for, for Ms. Campos? I don't see any.
How many hours did you spend on this?
Locked in was significantly helpful in helping get all these projections together, so we are grateful for that.
I appreciate the thoroughness of, of, of the job done and the, the cost savings to our, to our city. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just briefly add, if I may, and I think I do this every year, but I think it's just important to note that the expense of this stop-loss insurance, if you will, we've done a great job of obviously maintaining it this year, but compared to five years ago as an example, 10 years ago, I mean, it's gone up pretty significantly. And so I just want us to, to keep in mind that where we pay this insurance from is from our health insurance fund. I mean, so as we have holistic conversations about the health of the health insurance fund, this is one of those items where the expense, you know, is rising. And so it's just something to keep, be mindful of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item E3.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item E3 passes. We do have a city manager report. Mr. Garza.
Yeah? Promise?
It works.
I think so. All right. So wanted to take a moment to provide an update from our Water System Review Subcommittee. In conversations with the Subcommittee, we thought it was, things have evolved to a point where I think we can, we can say that the process has been successful and that we've made the adequate changes in order to hopefully prevent what happened in July and August from happening again. But because it has been several months, I wanted to provide a little bit of recap, a little bit of a recap for folks that might be tuning in for the first time or just for it to serve as a refresher. But these are the individuals that are part of that committee. Of course, they included our mayor, as well as Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Jan Scott, including myself, our now retired Public Works Director, Ken Gill, and Greg Rodriguez, our Public Works Assistant Director. Ken always finds a way to, like, just stay in. Just as a brief refresher, the committee was established in response to the July 2025 Bull Water Notice. And right smack in the middle of some of the committee work, we actually had the second Bull Water Notice in August. The purpose of the committee was to basically take a deep dive into what happened, to ensure that any core issues are addressed, and to ensure that it does not happen again for similar reasons. Of course, there are things that we can't control, but in this instance, there were definitely elements that, that were preventable, and I'll get into that here in a second. I do think that the makeup of the committee also sent a strong message that we review and make the changes in a timely manner. And obviously, by committing to having continual updates to you and to the public, I think also helped achieve that objective. Just really briefly, some of the things that the committee looked at, it started with a water system overview and so, and some initial briefing. It was important for the committee to gain a really great understanding of just how the water system works as a starting point to better understand what happened. And so in order to do that, we also needed to undertake a pretty extensive fact-finding and data collection process, as well as a review of our system and processes, which ultimately led to a root cause analysis, which I'll summarize here in the next couple of slides. And then ultimately, the objective was to obviously make the changes that needed to be made, but also finalize a report so that anybody who would be interested in understanding what happened and why it happened and what we were doing to prevent it could have a resource to reference with that information. And so I've already alluded to a couple of updates that we provided you, but I think it's important to note that the, that the committee started meeting on a weekly basis in July. It now is not meeting as frequent, but certainly at the height of it, it was meeting on a weekly basis. And we provide, we've provided two updates to you in August and in September. And so a big part of what I'll talk to you about today is what's happened since then. Some key takeaways also as a refresher is that nitrification played a big factor in those two Bull Water Notices. And it's important to keep in mind, as I walk through what we've done over the last several months, that a way to prevent nitrification is through, is through staying on top of our, our chlorine sampling, making sure that we don't allow water to stay stagnant or to age, that we complete preventative maintenance such as flushing the lines in the system, replacing aging infrastructure, which we know could be a factor, not a leading factor, but certainly a contributing factor. And more importantly, making sure that staff stays on top of the nitrification action plan, which basically calls for different measures to enact as that chlorine residual starts to rise. In addition, we noted that low consumption, or I should say, specific to the two Bull Water Notices that happened, we also identified that low consumption in some of the areas of town where we experienced the issue was a factor, which was directly tied to lack of flushing. We also noted that there was some human error in the lack of the implementation of the nitrification action plan in a timely manner. And through some of that investigations and talking to employees, we we also observed that there was just a lack of clear and structured operating procedures to really kind of instruct staff on what to do should an issue arise, right? It's one thing to identify an issue. It's another to understand what you do after that issue is identified. And so in our instance, the issue was not identified in a timely manner, but then when it was, the procedures didn't allow for a quick enough response to prevent the Bull Water notices from taking place. Ultimately, we summarized some of the improvement areas into three categories: people, processes, and technology and equipment. And so that's the way in which I'll provide the overview. Back in August, this is the exact same slide that we provided in August, where we started to talk to you about some changes in the, just the daily oversight of the plant, in the need to have, you know, Greg, as an example, and Roland more involved with the plant. We decided to look at bringing some people from the outside to help assess what's going on, and I'll get into that. We, of course, had the transition out of our then Surface Water Treatment Plant Manager shortly after the first Bull Water Notice, and so we knew even in August that hiring for that position would be a critical step in the right direction. In September's update, we provided this snapshot that basically was intended to reflect how we were going to, more permanently, ensure that the management of the Surface Water Treatment Plant reported directly to the Assistant Director, which, of course, is Greg, whose experience is heavily on the utility side. And so you notice on the left-hand side, the way that it was previously is that you had the Surface Water Treatment Plant Manager reporting to another manager before you got to some of the Public Works leadership. And so we changed it to where now the Surface Water Treatment Plant Manager reports directly to an Assistant Director, which was a position that didn't exist in June, but since was created and Greg promoted to that position. Some of this daily oversight, it sounds mundane, but has proved to be critical to ensuring that staff stays on top of the protocols and procedures and that we're truly ingraining in them the right way to do things. One of the things on the staffing side that was identified early on was just the lack of personnel at the Surface Water Treatment Plant and the impact that that had on their ability to keep up with the flushing of the lines. And we discussed at the update in September how the responsibility of flushing those lines isn't solely on the personnel at the Surface Water Treatment Plant, but also a responsibility of the Utilities Division of Public Works. At the time, we noted how there were some vacancies in both divisions, and so I've highlighted those specific divisions on the right-hand side to show you how the vacancies have progressed in those divisions that more directly are involved with ensuring that we're keeping up with the preventative maintenance of our water system. And so I'll start with the yellow, since that's with the Surface Water Treatment Plant. Back in September, we noted there were five vacancies. We're now down to one. And so we have successfully filled some key vacancies, which included the new Surface Water Treatment Plant Manager, John Smith, who started on October 20th, and then also the promotion of Todd Hoff to become our chief operator. We also had a transition in the chief operator position. Todd was made interim on September 27th, and we intentionally waited for John Smith to start so that John Smith could have a say in who would become the chief operator on a more permanent basis. And he went through a process and confirmed that Todd was the best individual to become the chief operator. So those were two very critical vacant positions that were filled in the last few months, but we've also been successful in filling other positions at the plant. There's only one remaining vacancy at the plant. One of the staff changes that we're also proceeding with is that some of you may recall that we froze some utility-centric positions several years ago to sort of make the budget work a little better in our favor. We're working on unfreezing one of those positions in order to add an eighth plant operator at the Surface Water Treatment Plant. They used to have eight plant operators, and then when the position of chief operator was created, they promoted one to chief operator, but never backfilled. Whoops, excuse me. But never backfilled that eighth operator position. And so if you think of shift work, one of the issues that was identified is that we need to make sure we have enough operators 24/7 through 65. And so adding that eighth plant operator will ensure that we have two people, two operators on every shift, and that'll help significantly. And so a lot of progress is being made on the staffing front. I'll note that on the bluish highlight, you notice that our vacancy in our utility divisions have actually gotten worse. And so in September, we showed that we had five vacancies in our water division with utilities and five with our wastewater personnel. Those are now at six and eight, respectively. And so while we're getting better at filling the vacancies at the plant itself, we're actually in a much worse position with the Utilities Division itself. You may recall that towards the end of the budget process, we started a conversation with the Compensation Subcommittee, but also mentioned it publicly that we were looking at trying to enhance pay for utility-centric positions. At the time, we were looking at possibly enhancing pay for all of the positions that you see on the right-hand side. However, after internal dialogue, after conversation with the Compensation Subcommittee, we've decided to solely focus on the ones that are highlighted in yellow, which are more of your frontline, field-centric positions and are the ones that are more, where we're seeing the biggest problem, which is the divisions that are now much, which are in a worse spot than they were a few months ago. We're not, our recommendation on how to enhance that pay is not finalized. That is something that we're still continuing to work on with the Compensation Subcommittee. One of the creative ideas that came from Councilwoman Butler, which we all actually really loved and we were surprised we hadn't thought of it ourselves before, was the idea of reviewing job titles for some of these positions. Because what we've learned is that we have several maintenance worker positions in our organization. You know, we have a maintenance worker at, you know, the Parks Department, as an example. We have a maintenance worker at the Streets Division. We have a maintenance worker with Utilities Division. But the responsibilities of each of those maintenance worker positions are vastly different. The need for their availability after hours is vastly different. You know, a parks maintenance worker isn't getting called out on Christmas Day, you know, to address a critical function that might lead to a Bull Water, right? And so there's an idea that possibly, that we're exploring, which is basically to maybe look at changing some of the job titles associated with some of these utility-centric positions that could help better convey the importance of the position, but could also help justify and validate some of the changes in pay that we want to be more aggressive about. But again, we plan on finalizing that recommendation with the Subcommittee and hopefully have an update to you on that here soon. A little bit more on the process side. And so I alluded to the fact that we also asked some third-party, leaned on some third-party folks to assist with some of these assessments. And so we did hire Texas Utilities and Environmental shortly after the first Bull Water Notice to come in and help assist with management of the plant in light of our manager leaving abruptly shortly after the first Bull Water Notice, but also just to help assess the operation and the processes to help with some of the standard operating procedures and things of that sort. And so we hired them for three months. We also partnered with TCEQ, more specifically their Texas Optimization Program, to help with some training. Since then, that three-month contract with Texas Utilities and Environmental has expired. It expired at the end of October. And this is just a list of a few things that they did with us, they did for us. But the important thing to note is that when they finished making these assessments for our Surface Water Treatment Plant, there was still time in their contract. So we actually asked them to go and assess our wastewater treatment plants. And so Mike with Texas Utilities and Environmental also did an assessment of our regional wastewater treatment plant and our Odom wastewater treatment plant to also help ensure that we're staying on top of standard operating procedures, processes, and things of that sort. And so having Mike on board for those three months was very helpful, not only to the Surface Water Treatment Plant, but to the Utilities Division as a whole. I mentioned the training with the Texas Optimization Program. I won't walk you through the details of this, but I do want to point out that the last and final training with the Texas Optimization Program is now scheduled for January. That was actually supposed to be in October, but it was delayed. And so that'll now take place in January. But once we get past that point, our relationship with the Texas Optimization Program will come to an end as well. They would remain as a resource in case we ever wanted them to come back and do any training, in case we have, you know, new personnel or anything to that extent. But in terms of sort of this first review of their first involvement, that'll come to an end here in January. On the equipment side, this was a slide that we shared in August, which basically attempted to already acknowledge the fact that our lack of staff obviously works against us. Our lack of equipment and modernization, to some extent, also work against us. And so we started in August to have conversations about the issues with automated flushers, meaning issues with existing, but also the need for more. We also started having conversations about exploring intank active water mixers to prevent the aging of water and to prevent the stagnation of water, which we know are contributing factors to nitrification. And we also noted at the time in August that it was a very paper-centric process on how employees logged data, which made it very difficult for anybody on the outside to track any trends that maybe weren't in our favor. And so these were things that we began exploring on how to improve since August. In September, at that update that we provided in September, we had already made significant progress on the auto flushers front. And so at that meeting, we had already shared with you that we had ordered some additional auto flushers and that those had been installed. At that time, we also started to share this idea of chlorine analyzers. The idea of chlorine analyzers didn't come up in August because we didn't realize the extent, how time-consuming it would be for staff to increase the frequency of the chlorine testing. And so you may recall that we made some significant changes in that we were now testing for chlorine several times per day versus once a week. We're now testing for nitrification, you know, every week, I think it was, right? Yeah, every week versus like every 90 days, like the law requires you to. All of these things were very time-consuming for personnel. And so between August and September came the idea of looking at chlorine analyzers, which are basically the systems that we intentionally install at our water towers to help do some of that testing for us so that it's not fully dependent on a human to have to drive everywhere to take these samples. This is a map showing the locations of the auto flushers. And so the map on the left shows the existing locations, as well as the new locations. I'll note that, for the most part, they are in the outskirts of the system because you may recall that one of the issues that was a consistent issue, specifically with the second Bull Water Notice, was that it was in the extremities of the system. And those are the areas that need, are probably more priority for flushing to ensure that old water gets out and new water can come and enter the system. The map on the right is simply just a refresher on where the water towers are located because that's actually where we placed the chlorine analyzers. Those chlorine analyzers are, would be located at all of the water towers, as well as Water Plan 3, and that's the map on the right. And we actually purchased those in September, and they arrived on December 1st, and will be installed by December 15th. We also, over the last few months, have received and installed all of the tank mixers. And so three out of five tank mixers that we needed for the towers were actually ordered in September during last fiscal year, and they were installed that same month in Towers 3, 4, and 5. And once the new fiscal year began in October, staff immediately ordered the two additional tank mixers, and those were installed in Towers 1 and 6 on November 10th. And so as you start to get a feel for this, many of the things that we had started talking about needing to get done are either done or are going to be done this month. On the software side, one of the biggest news that has come out of that is related to SCADA. This was the update that we provided in September, which basically, that update in September accounted for the need to possibly look at an alternative way to fund the SCADA system because we still had not received a full commitment from the GLO on that process that we've been waiting on for several years. But that has significantly changed because we do have a executed contract with the GLO now for that $19 million for SCADA. And there's actually an official kickoff meeting that's taking place this Thursday in order to start that process. And of course, the SCADA element of those three projects that we're wanting to pay out of that $19 million is priority. Since then, staff continues to evaluate programs, and we've actually already narrowed down, I won't say any names, but we've actually narrowed down the vendor and the specific SCADA program that we want. And staff actually, and both utility staff and IT staff actually had a successful visit just earlier, I was going to say this month, last month in November, to a different community where that specific SCADA system is in the works so that they could see for themselves how it works, talk to staff there about, you know, any issues that they had during implementation or just any issues that they have ongoing so that we can learn from that. And that visit was very helpful to confirm that that system is something that would be beneficial to us. And so that work is ongoing. One of the things that we also talked about in September was we referenced an eSense software, but I'd rather kind of focus on the qualities that we need from a software, which was the need to have a software that could supplement the manual logs so that we can have that remote access to the information, that the system could automatically generate some work orders in cases starts to notice that things are trending in a way that they aren't supposed to. That eSense software specifically couldn't actually provide what we needed from it, or it was going to be cost prohibitive as well to do it. And so staff continues to explore different software options that would facilitate having those elements. In the meantime, staff continues to use shared files to access data remotely. That's actually proved to be very, very successful. And so while there's still that next step in finding a software that actually will work with us and will more directly tie in with our work order system as well, just some of the, I guess, makeshift processes that staff has implemented with some of the shared files and access to them has already made a big difference, and so that's proved to be successful. And so there's still work to be done on the software front. But all in all, most of the critical work is complete. I don't want to say that we are done because I do think that it's important for us to always have a mindset that we need to continue prioritizing people, process, and technology, and that that mindset of continuous improvement be something that is just instilled in our daily operations. And so that'll continue. But the bulk of the work is complete. And so because of that, even just the meetings with the Subcommittee are going to shift to be on an as-needed basis since there isn't really a need to meet on a recurring basis anymore. And the real only tangible deliverable that's remaining is completing that written report. And so that is something that has just begun and that we've begun to engage our communications department because Sam Hankins is a better writer than people at Public Works. I didn't say any names. I didn't say any names. But in any case, and so that basically wraps up and concludes the final update that we intend to provide to you on the Subcommittee front. When the written report is complete, we'll simply distribute that to you when that happens. And like I said, just the ongoing mindset of being mindful of investing in people, processes, technology, we'll just continue to do that and embed that in our regular updates, annual updates to you, and in our annual budget process. Happy to answer any questions you might have or turn it over to any committee member that might want to add anything.
Anybody?
What's the anticipated or expected timeline on that report?
That's a great question. I would say probably a couple of months. Realistically, there's quite a bit of work and demand on our communications department currently. And so, you know, we're needing to find the balance with them on time spent on this versus, as an example, working on developing the rollout of the Stormwater Utility that we want to roll out in the spring. But I would say early 2026 is a realistic timeframe on when we can expect that.
Any other further comments?
Well, I'd like to thank the Subcommittee, staff, outside council that has been involved, helping to improve and secure our water system. It was a daunting task. I learned a lot, a lot in a short period of time. It's a very, very complicated process. And I will go to bat and say our employees do a fantastic job. Now, did we have some missteps along the way? Absolutely. I think that this was an open and honest and very thorough, hard investigation into what happened. And I appreciate it, being open, honest, and hard so that we get this right. But most importantly, I want to thank the public for their patience. But, but most importantly, I want to thank the public for their patience during this as well and trusting us to get this right, because clean, safe water is certainly a priority and something that should be expected. And I think that this process certainly helps secure and improve that going forward.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our city manager report. I don't see that there's any other work sessions. Mr. Garza, we do have executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, at this time, at 6:28, we will recess into, into executive session. We will take about a 10-minute break and reconvene here in about 10 minutes.
The city, yes, the city council recessed and is executive session, second day of December 2025 at 6:28. Subject matter of the executive session deliveries is the following: Texas Government Code 551.087, Texas Government Code 551.072, and Texas Government Code 551.071.